Please silence, shut off your cell phones. And join us as pledge of allegiance.
I am one of the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, um, we have some additions and deletions, I take it?
So I have three additions and one deletion. Our additions are landfill skips to your purchase, twenty first amendment to OHA agreement number one five nine eight one and resolution two zero two one dash code two C. And then deletion is resolution twenty twenty dash zero.
So first item on the agenda.
Can we not have an executive session?
Do, are we going to?
Um, Mr. Bailey emailed me this morning and said he didn't have anything for update.
Right.
But he said he sent you guys an email yesterday.
Yes, okay.
That's all I know.
So are we gonna deal with that?
Not in an executive session. We can't have an executive session for that.
I thought you said you could, didn't you?
You have, if it's for what I think it is, you have to give opportunity.
Um.
I would ask.
Yeah, yeah, no, so they're, I was just gonna pursue just letting him deal with it.
Okay.
Appropriately for now and then we'll get some more information later. Um, the uh, so the first item, public comment obviously is on here, but we don't seem to have any members of the public. Um, Danielle, do you have any?
Danielle.
You're, you're a member of the press, so.
Well, I did, but now, I like to think I'm both.
Okay, you have any public comment?
Um, you know, I forgot my notes at home, so I'll just, I'll submit them.
In writing?
Yeah.
Make it official, put it in writing. Alright, so with that, our first act, um, first item is administrative fees. Um, we had some discussion yesterday with Ann. I guess. I guess for the time being. This, the, the recommendation before us is to adopt these, this is the current policy. Is there any discussion anyone wants to have on that? Or any changes or?
No, in work session yesterday, you know, we asked her when she gets time to compare to other counties. And uh, when she can get that back to the chicaness in the meantime. It would be in favor of adopting what's been presented.
So this, basically what we've done so far.
Should we table it until him brings those back?
You have to belt it into the budget.
Yeah, she, she has to have something, but.
Correct. Is that a motion, Greg?
I have moved that we adopt the admin fees for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget as presented.
Second. Uh, motions have been made and seconded, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll just leave that for the time being. Until we get another proposal in front of us, so uh, next item is resolution, um. Which one was this?
Twenty twenty, the medical examiner.
Okay, right. Yeah, so this is the first one, do we have to do these separately?
Yes.
We're only doing the O A.
Yeah, we're doing O eight and then we're doing O nine.
No.
No, O nine's been dealt.
O nine wasn't noticed appropriately, so we're not taking action until next meeting.
Oh.
Yes.
Because we have to have a supplemental, we're not submitting our original action.
Yes. Right, okay, thank you. Alright. So we'll just be taking action today on the uh. Medical examiner, uh, transfer and it's just, it's a decrease of four thousand dollars uh, from the general fund contingency. And a increase of four thousand materials and services. So. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty dash zero eight. A increase in appropriations for the medical examiner department, four thousand dollars.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, next item landfill, skid steer purchase.
I make the motion to approve the purchase of. Skid steer that was quoted at forty thousand. Two hundred twenty eight dollars. Uh, from Peterson Cat for the landfill.
Okay, uh, motions have been seconded to approve the purchase of the Caterpillar two nine nine C compact tractor. For a fiscal impact of forty thousand two hundred twenty eight dollars. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Next item, we have ASA variant support request.
So do we have to do these individually?
Do we need a motion or can we just do it by consensus?
There's only two, so.
Yeah.
There's three actually.
That one's not from us, it's just supplemental material.
Which one?
Oh, um, that one right there, that's supplemental.
This one?
Yeah, this one is the actual letter that we're sending, so.
So.
So basically, um, just by consensus of the board, um, we'll be sending two separate letters, one for Silver Lake EMS and one for Mark Lake County EMS.
Sounds good.
Would that Commissioner Schulerberg?
Yes.
Alright, consensus is, we'll get that signed.
We already did those. So we just go.
No, I just wanted to confirm that you left the other one, the SRO position until next meeting. Perfect, and I confirm that the paper is published today.
Yeah, Melanie kept us on track, kept us from making any movement on that today, so we're good.
Okay, great.
Um, next item, mental health bylaws amendments.
So did we get any feedback from the director?
Not yet, so I was hoping you guys could make a motion contingent upon her final review. And we can just nip it in the bud on our end and then, if there are any changes, we can, I feel like it's fine.
Yeah, I don't foresee she'll have any problem with it.
So I make a motion to approve the mental health advisory board bylaws contingent on the mental health director's uh, approval of our amendments.
Second.
Uh, motion have been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, aye, motion carries.
We need a. I guess. No, no timeline on when?
We'll hear back from her, but I'm sure she'll be getting back to us.
Oh, this is good for the contingent part. Question.
Let's give her a couple of things till next meeting.
Worst case scenario, we redo it at the twenty meeting on twenty first.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and they, they likely won't even have another, um. Uh, meeting before that, so. Um. Twentieth Amendment O H A agreement.
Make a motion to accept the twentieth amendment to the Oregon Health Authority. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one intergovernmental agreement for financing of public health services.
As presented. Okay, uh, motion on the table, is that a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made seconded, uh, to approve the twentieth amendment to Oregon Health Authority, uh, agreement one five nine eight one eight. With a positive fiscal impact on public health of thirty four thousand dollars seventy three, uh, thirty four thousand seventy three dollars for COVID response funds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oh, I did not ask any further discussion on that? Oh wow. I tried to do it before the motion and before the, before we take final eyes, but. It's again sometimes. The uh, twenty first amendment to O H A agreement. Which one is this, twenty first?
It's for vaccination and.
Okay, right. This is the. This one's fairly significant. Yeah. I'll entertain a motion on this, it's four hundred and ten thousand total.
I'll make a motion to accept the twenty first agreement to the Oregon Health Authority. Agreement number one five nine eight one eight for a fiscal impact of four hundred and ten thousand.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve the twenty first amendment to Oregon Health Authority, uh, with the Oregon Health Authority, uh, agreement one five nine eight one eight as presented.
All those in favor?
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Include circus.
Okay, discussion. I did, I don't wanna have any discussion on that. First amendment to O H A agreement, so now we're down to factor the first. Going backwards, um.
That's a different agreement.
Yeah. Which one is this?
One six six.
It is for the youth summer.
Oh, this is, okay.
One six six.
We always forget on this. Alright.
Hold the chair.
Twenty five thousand three hundred and forty nine, yeah, this is, uh. This is, this is Francine's.
Okay, I'll make the motion, uh, to approve the first amendment to the Oregon Health Authority. Twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one intergovernmental agreement for the financing of mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention, and problem gambling services agreement number one six six zero four six. For the amount of twenty five thousand three hundred and forty nine dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the first amendment to Oregon Health Authority intergovernmental agreement. Number one six six zero four six as presented, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I have a comment.
Yeah. Yes.
So they're gonna open that up for recommending youth that might be interested, um, they're hoping to have transportation to get to the camp, so if you guys have any youth that you're thinking that might wanna go to the leadership summit.
Okay.
Can you run that past Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we've got, we've got a few other things in here, um. We're, we'll go in, we can get into the climate lake forest health, but I, I noticed our road superintendent joined us, um. Morning Kevin.
Morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good. Um, uh-oh, looks like I'm buying lunch for everyone.
I better turn mine off.
I said, I thought for sure that I turned it off.
Discussion.
I better turn mine off then.
Yeah.
By lunch.
I thought for sure that I silenced it, but I think, because I did. I, it's probably a tall martyr. Um. So, did you have anything?
I just, I actually didn't see that you guys were gonna talk about the admin fees, so I'm, I missed that yesterday, cuz I was up there. And I thought I could catch the, take the beginning part of it, but maybe you already went through it.
Yeah, we already went through it, but we did, we did have some discussion yesterday, we talked about it a lot. And I think Commissioner Schulerberger wanted to have some time to kinda go over some things and. And so, for now, we're just gonna kinda leave it the way it is until we have some time to, for the other commissioners to talk. Uh, with the other department heads and maybe try and come up with a better solution, alternative for the admin fees.
Yeah, that's all, I missed it yesterday, so I didn't know if I, if there was.
We did ask the treasurer to compare to other counties, what they're doing.
Yeah.
So that we can see if there's a better way of doing business.
Yeah.
Um. One of the points that was in question, uh, for your department was computers. And uh, I noticed that it was, uh, the total of eighty four hundred dollars. And it was the seventh highest, uh, cost out of other departments. So I, I did, I don't feel like it's out of proportion. That was one of the things I was really looking for. Um. Another one that is high for you guys is treasurer and also. Business.
Yeah.
And. The road crew has more money than anybody and they have more transactions than anybody. And I think it takes up more time in those two departments, probably as high as anybody of all the departments in the county. So those were, uh. You know, those were considerations that were all looked at, so.
Okay. That's all, I, I missed it yesterday, cuz I was up there, so I wanted to see what I could catch this morning. But if you know, I didn't, I, in, in the budgeting process, when I met with James and Ann the other day, just to review some of my numbers, I didn't have a specific number to put in, so I didn't know if you guys were making that determination. Not necessarily just for me, I mean, just in general across the board, so.
Right.
Was there a particular one you were curious about or?
No, like I said, I just missed it from yesterday, cuz we've been working in Christmas Valley and I saw it on there this morning when I was finalizing some of my budget here and get it in. And so I ran up here quick thinking that maybe you guys were still gonna have discussion, I told him, I just was trying to catch the tail end of the discussion.
I think we'll definitely keep trying to have more discussion on this, it's kind of an ongoing conversation, so. The, um, do you have any update for the board on the roads and some of the construction going on up there north?
Um, we're putting shoulders on, we started on Monday up there, putting shoulders on Milliken Road and then we'll, soon as we're done with that, maybe tomorrow, we'll be on Christmas Valley Highway. And then we're gonna be on Christmas Valley Highway for a good portion of the foreseeable future, so, um, there's a lot of shoulders fits and so that's what we'll be doing, uh, for the next several weeks. And then we, um, should be able to, to get some asphalt, maybe like the second week of May. Um, we have the whole asphalt from a long ways off though, so, come from Burns, that's the closest source. And, or Heinz, I guess, so. And then we'll, uh, be fixing the cattle yards, five cattle yards out of our crosshair, fixing them for both removal and permanent fix of them and, um, then, uh, we'll put mechanized patches over them so that they ride. Hopefully like they weren't ever there.
What section of the, of Milliken are you guys on right now working on the shoulders? Is that the upper?
Uh, they're prob, they're probably getting ready to turn right where the lost, lost forest and fossil lake and Milliken all come together, they're probably getting ready to turn around and come and start back, so.
Okay.
That material that we're putting on Milliken, um, Christmas Valley was material produced from a rock contract. Uh, from Carl's pit. Trying to remember when that was though, maybe two, maybe two years ago.
Yeah. Late two thousand nineteen, I think.
And, and then we also have a stockpile of the county, we, county has stockpiled material, uh, there from previous contracts that we're going to utilize, so. Um. To, you know, for that reason, for sure. A lot, a lot of that mileage from the Chevron two three ninety five has, um. Significant toward liability issues for the county with low shoulders. Uh, partially due to how far it is away from everything and being able to mobilize equipment and work on it, but also because of, because of cattle. There's a lot of that road that has cattle traffic that walks the shoulders down, so. We're gonna fix all that.
Did you see my, uh, email about, uh, in painting the?
Yeah, I saw, I saw them toward the main line, I talked to the little boy guy when he came through there, moving equipment over there to start doing what, whatever their contract allows for, but I did see that, yeah.
Will that affect your?
Shouldn't, the only thing I need to talk to them about is we're, we're gonna reconstruct the intersection at three ninety five of ours, Christmas Valley Highway, um, but I'm going to replace it in kind, so whatever they do, we won't, we won't change. We won't have to change anything, we'll just replace ours in kind. Our intersection is for the first four hundred feet there because of heavy truck traffic. More and more and more increasingly heavy truck traffic twisted and turned on that road that was never designed for that. So that, that asphalt or cold mix that's in there is pretty well, its useful life is spent. So I plan on increasing the depth of that asphalt when we reconstruct it, but we won't change anything that would affect them. And then we also, lastly, um, and I guess just to kinda give credit to this agreement that we have with B L M, we'll, we'll, a lot of those, a lot of that shoulder material will also be used and out of the wagon tire B L M pit because we trade that value for the work that we trade with B L M and I, I, it's just worth noting, cuz for us, it is a very good trade. For the val, for the value, it's a good trade for them and it's a very good trade for us for the value when we need material in, in these, uh, very remote locations, I guess.
Proximities.
Yeah, otherwise, we're hauling material forty seven miles, where now we're only gonna haul about ten, so it's very good. Cost wise for us, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, next up on our list, we have climate lake forest health partnership donation. Um, do we wanna discuss that, how, what, think about a donation or what we wanna be able to contribute or?
Yeah, so yesterday, climate lake forest health partnership came and gave us a presentation, what all they have going on from Lake County. And, um, it's pretty extensive, uh, they have a lot going on and they are obvious benefit to Kim. I think it would be appropriate to, uh, give the contribution that they have recommended of fifteen thousand dollars.
Oh, wait, wasn't fifteen, what, we were giving to L C R I?
Yeah, L, L, L C R I was fifteen thousand.
Oh.
We haven't, we didn't.
I was thinking L C R I, sorry.
Oh, yes. Um.
We've never contributed to these guys, we're thinking.
I thought they were gonna get back to us on the mail, but for Friday.
They, they were.
Or we could do the five thousand that we had discussed, potentially. And then, if we can do more than that later, we can consider it. Because that was, that's basically rounded up from the, the, our contribution of.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Yeah, I'll help.
I don't know what just happened. Just keep talking.
Uh, no worries.
Uh, let's keep this simple.
Uh, okay. What do you want to do, what do you think?
Do we have to make a decision now?
We don't, we don't actually.
No, but I'd kinda like to include it in my budget if it's sizable.
And five thousand.
Cause then we contributed to Central Oregon thirty four hundred.
I think it's even less than three.
You know what, and that was.
Year before last.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, we didn't do it last year.
So. Five thousand?
Yeah. Okay. She, she wants to budget ten.
Let's, let's go with five.
Yeah, I'm gonna five.
We have five thousand.
Let's just, if, yeah, we can, if we can, once we kinda get through budget and stuff, we can always kinda. Well. That just seemed.
So we're at a.
Five thousand?
I'm in here.
Discussion. Well, he didn't make a motion, he was just having a discussion.
I was just discussing.
Okay. So do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to contribute to Els, to climate lake forest health partnership. For seventy five hundred dollars.
I always wondered if that was coming, there was that hesitation, and I was like, oh, he's gonna, he's gonna go up.
Second.
I'll discuss it.
Okay.
Alright, it's motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
That was a huge car to move. That was a setup.
Alright.
I feel that, uh, that, um, their contributions that they're commute, uh, giving to the county is, uh, more than the five thousand. It's a, it's a meet and mill contribution there. So we'll, we'll sort them out and set the equipment.
Alright, sounds good. Any further discussion? I will call for a vote, any, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Um. Okay, so the O, O D A wolf compensation financial assistance, um.
Not in the chair, but are we going to? L C R I is, is.
We approved it yesterday.
Did we?
I thought so.
Yeah, yeah, we, we did like consensus yesterday.
Yeah, watch me.
That's short term.
Yeah, because I think that was fifteen.
Yeah.
I'm sure Schulerberger jacked that up even this morning.
Yeah, don't, yeah, don't call for the vote again, so.
Alright, sorry to.
Um, alright, uh, yeah, so the wolf compensation, um, depredation agreement. We've got. It was a thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and we're just, we're just be. Uh, voting on the, uh, the agreement itself.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty one Oregon Department of Agriculture wolf compensation and financial assistance grant. Number O D A dash four two six five dash G R for the amount of a thousand dollars for Lake County.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, um, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, next up, resolution twenty twenty one, uh, dash O two C. Which one was this?
This is our doubt draft declaration that I gave you this morning.
Oh, perfect.
And with that's attached to the letter.
You know, I think I may have left in my office. I would find it. Thank you. Yeah. I'm good with it.
So at the end, it, it talks about the request of the Honorable Kate Brown, Governor of Oregon, to declare a drought emergency for all Lake County amendment provisions. So, once this is processed, it will go up to the governor's desk or the county drought declaration by the governor.
And it's also registered with O N. So Daniel, tag me, I'll have a copy.
Yeah, so, I send all of our disaster declarations to Daniel and then he uploads them into the O N database and then it goes to Governor Brown. But I, but these two people work in that, in her department, so they'll have like four one that is coming in.
So we need a motion on this?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we need a motion, but the, uh, real quick, the, um, the letter, um, to Andrew, uh, Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Niall, is it Niall?
I don't know.
Um, I'm probably butchering her name. But the very last, uh, or the second from the last paragraph, um, Lake County Board of Commissioners therefore request an executive order from the governor declaring drought in Oregon County.
Oh, I need to change that.
Just Oregon counties or?
Lake County.
Lake County.
So that was a form letter that Brian sent me?
Okay. All right, so that's.
Would that change?
Would that change? That's, that's the only thing that I saw. I was trying to remember, I, I did put it on the other one. I just was trying to remember what I changed and what I saw. So, that was it.
Good catch. So I have a motion to accept our two, I guess I wouldn't accept, but to make our drought, drought declaration, emergency doubt, drought declaration for all of Lake County.
Motion on the table?
To, which, which is represented by Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero two C. Thank you.
So.
I say.
Uh, motion to made and seconded, um, to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero two C uh, in the matter of declaring a disaster request and declare state of emergency, drought emergency for Lake County, Oregon, uh, or that would be inclusive of all of Lake County. Um, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Yes, sir. Uh, last, the, the fun one, um, meeting minutes from March sixteenth, March seventeenth. And, uh, also March thirtieth. I'll entertain the motion on the minutes, but you guys haven't had time to read them.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from March sixteenth work session, March seventeenth regular session, March thirtieth emergency session.
Second, uh, motion to made and seconded to approve the minutes, um, those presented, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, with that, we do have a continuation for this meeting at two thirty, uh, where we will be joined by the One or Three Correctional Facility Coalition, uh, to discuss tomorrow's meeting with, uh, Governor Kate Brown. Uh, so, um, I will recess the meeting at, uh, if there's no, not nothing further come before us, I will recess the meeting at ten thirty-six.
We're gonna talk about this later.
Oh, was that, that wasn't on the agenda, was it?
He wanted to talk about it?
I just don't want it to fall through the cracks. We need to decide what we're trying to do. We could bring it up on the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, their budgets.
And so we probably should talk.
Okay, um, let's, let's re, go ahead and reopen the meeting. Okay, so we reopen the meeting. We do have one other item of business before us. Um, yesterday, our sheriff came before us and he's requested, uh, some additional deputies, uh, four additional deputies, um, as well as, um, making our emergency manager, emergency coordinator position a civilian position and, uh, backfilling that position with, uh, other dollars. So, um, we'll go ahead and have that discussion now. We'll decide kind of what we wanna do on that. What are your thoughts?
So, so the O E M position is they match it up to sixty thousand dollars.
Fifty percent.
Yeah, and so, um, talking to the sheriff and, and under Sheriff Hall yesterday, what would I would like to do is have the sheriff's department absorb that position. So what it would create is a full-time O E M and which would cause them to lose a half-time officer. So in reality, what I'd like to do is have the sheriff's office budget for a position and a half because of the half-time officer they're losing from. And from what I understand from those two, they could possibly absorb that cost.
Okay.
I agree with that, um, when we, I think that it is good business to privatize the O E M position. Um, we've, we've tried it the other way for many years and, uh, they've recognized that it's, has its faults and it's too much for a deputy to take on O E M and do deputy work, paperwork involved. Um, so I would support privatizing O E M.
Privatizing or owner?
Civilian.
Civilian, oh, yeah.
So, then on top of that, he is requesting four additional deputy positions. For the, I don't know, for the budget process, you know, I'm very concerned about adding any positions due to that we're also looking for a nuisance officer. And I think that it is. So you guys understand the budget process better than I do. Uh, if he were to budget for one additional, uh, deputy, we still have the ability to cut it at the budget process. So. I guess I would entertain that discussion with you guys of having a budget for one additional deputy. Um, he talks about, uh, how many peo- two point four officers per thousand people. And right now, we're at one officer per eleven hundred and, or third, I can't remember what I did, did you math it? Yeah, so we're over four, almost fourteen hundred people per one officer right now uh, in the sheriff's office. So obviously, we're, we're down of what the standard should be quite a bit. But we obviously can't afford four positions. Uh, I think that that was, uh, you know, reflecting with the true need is, but I think they would be happy with one. That way, when we get to the budget process, we still have the ability to, uh, not approve it. If it doesn't fit, that'd be my thought.
So the O E M position is seven and a half in the sheriff's office. So.
We might wanna separate these two asks, just real quick. Make sure that, you know, work on the O E M thing, have that as a separate topic. And then look at the, the additional deputies on top of that. It's, take those two and put them separate.
Agreed.
Um, Melanie, you had something?
Yeah, I was thinking you could make that a fund of his, like, a separate fund and then, um, have that exempted position. Like maybe comparable to the B S L.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So they would have, it would be a non-exempt or non-exempt position that the rest of the department has. So they have some flexibility in their work schedule and, um, some ownership and it's just easier. It's not an hourly employee for a position like that.
Right.
The direction will, it's gonna be like, he's gonna, he or she in that position will have, the commissioners will be their boss and the sheriff will be their boss.
We're talking O E M.
O E M, because we do deal directly with the O E M person in the case of emergency. So.
I, I think it's logical, though, having that emergency coordinator being someone that's exempt, um, and so that they're not hourly. It's easier to budget for and everything else and, um.
You could have to do it.
Absolutely. So, just wanna make sure, give credence to that. So, good direction to go if we're going to create that position and have it separate. Uh, we'll have to, of course, get a job, um, description put together.
So can you work that with Jay?
And, uh, because we'll have to put out for, put out for the position, put the position out there, apply it. Um, now, we, we are receiving about sixty thousand dollars from the state for that position. We will have to budget in some additional dollars with that. Um, and also backfill, um, the current emergency coordinators pay, so.
So my question is, they say up to sixty thousand. So their end is up to sixty thousand or so we're up to sixty thousand, thirty from the county, thirty from them?
Well, it could be that.
Depends on.
Their, their, their max is sixty thousand that they'll pay fifty percent. So, in reality, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar job, they'd pay sixty thousand. Or thirty thousand, they'd pay thirty, or sixty thousand, they'd pay thirty. But they have up to, their contribution is maxed out at sixty thousand dollars.
I, I certainly would like to see this more of an entry level, uh, salary scale. Yeah, absolutely.
Even on the higher.
Yeah, absolutely, no.
Cause we have to.
You have to, and through the step.
That's why I was suggesting comparable to our B S L.
Say that again?
That's why I was suggesting maybe it's comparable to our B S L.
One is to be, is that the veteran service officer?
That's what I would be in favor of.
And then I asked Jay to evaluate that scale that they sent us since it's from twenty seventeen. I haven't heard back from him yet, but I know there's been some significant changes to payroll since then, just for benefits and, um, some increases and things that would be applicable to that, so. I think it'll be close, but it's not completely accurate because some things have happened since then. But, so he's gonna work on that for you guys.
All right, so now, next up.
Well, do we need a motion or do we do this by consensus? I believe we may need a motion, actually. No?
I don't know, just.
Well, because we basic, we're, well.
You can just give us, give us direction to.
Consensus, consensus and direction, yeah, all right, yeah, that'd be fine. If we can just, and I think it's been articulated already, basically, that's kind of the direction that we're going. Um, so if we can get those numbers plugged into the budget, so that's what we're actually trying to do. Um, of course, Jay will write up that job description and we'll kind of go from there. There'll be further action required on part of the board, um, in the future. So, we'll just go that route for now. Um, pertaining to, and, and that's agreeable with you, gentlemen? That's agreeable with you?
Yep.
Okay, um, the next item on that, uh, same strain as, uh, uh, the additional deputies.
So my thought would be to have the sheriff bring forward one deputy position and absorb it in our current budget. Absorb it from our current budget.
Not the, uh, half a position. Now, they, they'd be efficient to the ha- the, the full-time position that they'd be getting when that O E M goes away. That would be it.
So one point five?
So.
Or are we one point five or are we gonna?
We're gonna add basically a position and a half, basically, is what we're talking about. But it's even more.
So we either pu- provide a position on half or a half position. We come up with the money for half position. Because they're losing a half a deputy. By taking the O E M, and so that's.
They're like gain, they're gaining a half a deputy because the O E M is beyond over.
Well, that's true, they are gaining a half.
So that deputy is now full-time a deputy. So they have, so all the.
But their, but their financial part was, half of it was paid for by O E M.
Correct, so that, that payment is going away, but I mean, it's still a solter.
Are we asking them to absorb that second half now?
That's what I was wondering.
That was formerly paid for by O E M into their budget.
It's a budget for it.
That's what I think.
They absorb the long-term type. I think it's probably doable.
And if, if we have to cut it later, we may have to, the additional position.
You guys might have some tough discussions during the budgets.
Correct, and the fact is, is that there's been a number of retirements that have taken place. I think that some of these positions are going to roll over into new positions and there's going to be some new officers eventually. So it might be wise that we just kind of take it, you know, one step at a time, especially loo- looking into our budget, um, that we're not adding additional positions when some of those things are gonna kind of sort themselves out over time. When we can have those officers all back out on the street and back on patrol. Fingers crossed.
The, the problem is, though, is like what the sheriff brought up in that new law and legislature where they'll be civilly responsible for their actions. The odds of getting more police officers, we might be running, and so that is definitely a concern.
Well, yeah, but it, it really doesn't affect us in terms of, you know, whether or not we try to budget for the position or not. Um, if we don't get the officer, no one puts in for it, no one puts in for it. But.
So I'm a little bit confused, so what are we, what is the ask? What is?
I, I think it's still.
One position?
Well, one point five is what I thought we.
Yeah, but how are you gonna do a one point five?
I thought that was what your ask was, I mean, you've done me.
The, the money part, I'm talking actual physical body.
Well, they have the budget. Okay, um, they have the emergency coordinator right now working as a part-time deputy. They'd be getting that position as a full-time deputy, basically, in a body, because we'd be taking O E M and we'd be putting it over here separate. Um, so that emergency coordinator becomes a position of its own. Take that off the table. We'll just talk about the sheriff's office as far as actual bodies.
So Daniel will be a.
Full-time deputy, not part-time, so that's your half. And then you're talking about taking rather than four new deputies, you're at least just doing one additional.
So that's one and a half.
Right.
We have to come up with the money.
Well, more so than that, in my opinion, because you still have to pay that emergency man- manager, the, the current emergency manager, you're gonna have to backfill what he was getting paid. You have to take the sixty thousand over here and then you have to pay for that person. So, uh, for his full benefits as well. So technically, in my opinion, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you're talking about two full positions by the end of it as far as actual dollars that we're messing with here, because that new.
Right, you're gonna have a full-time O E M and a full-time deputy.
Correct. And that, and that full-time O E M, emergency coordinator is going to need a benefit package and everything else that go along with it. So we need to fill that, we need to backfill the pay that the deputies no longer are getting because he's now a full-time deputy. And now we're also talking about an entire empty body.
And you know, if the budget doesn't support it?
Then it doesn't.
And we just go back to O E M and, and the half position of current deputy.
But in the meantime, I think it is, it would be good to go move forward with this and try and create a full-time O E M position, um, that is actually full-time O E M and not trying to balance.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that, questioning additional deputy.
Right, okay, well, that's, I understand that.
So like, when, just to make it clear, when budget time comes and we can't afford one, it's not gonna be, it's the deputy that we're not gonna put on, not the O E M person.
Correct, that'd be what I would support.
Okay.
Me too.
Gotcha.
But.
Let's let, let's let the budget pour, we'll see.
Yeah.
Let's give it a shot.
Clear as mud?
Clear as mud.
Yeah.
Thank you guys for.
Yep.
I just didn't want this to fall through the cracks. We spent time on powering it to us, so.
No, absolutely. No, very good, good catch, good point. Um, any further discussion on that? Or anything else we want to talk about? You guys have any liaison updates or anything?
Quickly on the fair, um, our maintenance program is moving ahead. They've been working on the restrooms and other things. And we were thanked by the fair board for bringing that forward.
Maintenance group?
Maintenance group, fair has been up there several times a week. Um, and so I thank you guys for backing me on that one. And that's all.
Okay. Good, excellent. Um, I spoke with Congressman Pence this morning, had a long conversation with him and his staff. Uh, most of the staff are, um, former staff of Congressman Walden's office. Um, we had some good, good discussion about some of the policy things that are kind of moving their way through the federal level. Uh, let's see, what else? Um, I have been working on this, uh, burn ordinance now for about a year and a half. Uh, we've been waiting for language from the fire marshal, deputy fire marshal for a while. Um, they, of course, during COVID, weren't able to travel over here for some of the meetings we've had on fire. But, um, I had just went through and I went, found the language I felt needed to be there. And I submitted it to, uh, Fire Defense Board for their review. Um, we'll have that another week. And, uh, if all goes well, I'll be bringing an ordinance before you guys. And, uh, we'll have some hearings on it, put it into place, um, if it's sufficient. The, um, another thing that I've been working on with the Christmas Valley Water District is a well ordinance. Um, and.
Just to go back to the burn ordinance.
Sure.
I think I've discussed it with you before. I, I really support, uh, the timing being the same as when O D F declares fire season, so that we're not confusing the public.
So just so you know, I went through it again last night, really cleared up the language. I took out a whole bunch of things that I thought were repetitive from my original draft. And I put in a trigger point that as soon as O D F declares fire season, fire season will be in effect, and so is the burn ban.
They might, the fire season, yeah.
Yeah, there, there is some language in there to allow for local discretion and allow our, our defense board, uh, to declare it earlier if they see necessary, if they see fit. Um, or, or for us to declare it if they see fit, if we see fit, or to, um, basically, uh, drop the ordinance, basically, and pull it. And that language just has to be in there. From my opinion, I felt it was important to maintain that local jur- jurisdictional authority over our own ordinance. But, um, the trigger point is.
I struggle to be more restrictive than what O D F is.
I understand that. So, I, and I doubt that it will ever be used. I think it's just.
A tool that is.
Basically, it's our ordinance, and so I, I felt like it, it should definitely be, we need to maintain that local discretion over it, but. And I'll, I'll actually send a draft.
So you know my feelings for the people.
I appreciate it. So thank you. And, uh, I'll send a draft. You guys can see, can see it as well. Um, thank you.
So does that allow us to still, like, call in to dispatch and get it permitted to?
Yeah, it may likely be denied, depending on fire, weather conditions and everything. Um, there will be, there is some language in there pertaining to burn barrels, still being allowed, but they have to, they have to be permitted. And there have to be defensible space of twenty-five feet, which is what the fire, fire marshal basically advised. Um, non-combustible material within twenty-five feet of it. And, uh, you have to have a screen over the top of it. Um, there's a bunch of language in there that the Fire Defense Board felt was appropriate, actually did allow. So, um, other than that, uh, also, the, the, the water well ordinance in Christmas Valley, I've sent it off to the Water District up there and they're kind of working on some different things. But, uh, I'll be giving you guys the draft of what they're trying to do and what we've been working on. I don't have anything else to.
Yeah, I don't have anything. Great performance for my.
Okay. With that, uh, we will recess the meeting until two thirty. The time is ten fifty-eight. It is, um, two thirty-two. Um, we are back in session and the next item on our agenda is the Lake County, uh, Coalition for the Warner Creek Correctional Facility. So, Jane, I'm going to give you the floor.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, as you all know, tomorrow, four o'clock, the governor will be zooming in. Um, we just got lucky, folks. We really just got lucky. Um, we got Mr. Williamson, who were able to kind of finagle it through the back door of Regional Solutions and, um, she agreed to meet with us. So, um, we set that up and, um, she, I do believe, I truly do believe, she was unaware that we wanted to meet with her. I think her staff protected her from our, um, pleas to meet with her. And, um, she very graciously said, God, if you'd like to want to talk to me, love to talk to you. So now we are. Last week, Constantine Severe, who many of you, um, lived in August, and you've been with him. He called me last week and, um, said, so I hear the governor's going to meet with you. What, what are we gonna talk about? So I said, well, what are we gonna talk about? Um, prison closing?
Who do you think we want to talk about? Sorry. I'm sorry. I thought it was a loaded question.
It was very loaded. But, you know, since we went through the back door of Regional Solutions, he was unaware that we were gonna talk until last week. And so, um, he was doing his due diligence as a staffer and wanted to know who was going to be in the room. I told him all of you. Um, told him, um, and then, um, cinnamon email early this week, which is a little bit more background. And, um, he told us one half an hour. I did schedule it for later in the day with the hoax that we could go longer. We got everybody really interested. Um, he kind of said, it's our meeting, so we can kind of set, set the agenda to a degree.
It was pleasant. It was nice.
Yeah, it really was. Um, we're going to, so we can do that. Um, he, you know, again, they kind of think that Senate Bill nineteen, the, um, Senate Bill to turn the, the building over to the county, um, might be the solution to our problems. Um, isn't that enough? They, he did say once again that the governor is willing to be, to very much, and the legislature. Um, he has talked, he has talked to the, what they call the tri-chairs, the three chairs of the Ways and Means Committee. And they are very, very interested in any type of, um, out-of-the-box thoughts that would help Lake County. Um, I have, I was, continue to be very firm in the best solution is in the box, which is to keep the prison. Um, you know, I doubt that this call honestly is going to save the day. But I think our best hope is to, you know, obviously, she's going to have the floor first. I think she will, I think she will tell us that she made a very hard decision. And then she will say, I'd like to hear what you have to say. And then, so we need to talk today about what we're going to say with that keeping in mind, half an hour is not very long. So we need to be really sharp in how, who we decide to talk, how, what they're going to say, how we can be timely, how we want to address Senate Bill nineteen and how it can help us. How we make that transition from, boy, we really want to keep the prison to what could help us. Um, and maybe I'll turn the floor over to somebody else right now. Does anybody have any off the top of their head thoughts? Um, James, you wanna, you were kind of in all of the meetings I was, and I talked to you and I talked to Constantine.
Yeah, you, you sent me Constantine's email, which I, I thought, like you did, very interesting. You know, wanting to know what we were going to be asking, what, who is going to be in the room, what kind of questions are going to be. Um, for him to be asking those questions led me down the road of feeling like he, the left hand wasn't letting the right hand know what was going on. And also confirming, you could say confirming, uh, suspicion that we've had that the governor has been isolated by her staff. So I really, I think that this is a really good move for us to be in, in a good step. Be able to have the governor face, you know, the face-to-face as we can get and, uh, get some answers to a certain extent, but also have that chance to clear our case. Is to, and make sure that the information is actually getting to her. I think it's very logical to, to imagine that our pleas through the past of saying, don't close the prison, don't close the prison. But if you do, give it to us so we can figure out what to do with it and we can try and help our community. But the message that is related to her is, oh, Lake County wants the prison. And I think there's a misconception among the general public here in Lake County as well that the commissioner's number one goal is to get the prison facility, and that is totally inaccurate. Um, because our number one plan from the beginning has been to keep the prison open. But we've also been told by numerous legislators that it was a done deal. It was over and that we needed to adopt Plan B. And Plan B, of course, we, we try and see if we could get the facility. And I think, you know, without, without throwing anyone under the bus, I think that it's been kind of an easier route to go for some of the folks up at the state level to just say, just give them the facility. And, uh, just, that's not what we want. It's not what we have wanted. Um, the fact that she seems so surprised when, when we were talking to her and you, you spoke to her and said, hey, here's, this is what's gonna happen to Lake County. You want, you want to help us. You want to help Lake County, but here's what's gonna happen if you close the facility. We're gonna need help for many, many years to come. And she was so taken back and surprised by that, in shock, like you said, like, well, let's talk. That, that leads me to believe.
Because in her top ten goals, goal number three is to help the economic development of rural camps, rural communities.
Correct.
So did she get the information that we have from Damon about the impact of the economic, we don't know.
We honestly don't know what she knows.
Right.
Her staff got it.
Yeah, her staff got it. We know that. And the, and the information that Michael has about how it would affect the school system, yeah, we don't know.
We honestly don't know for the right moment. I mean, all we know that she knows is what we do.
It could have been at some point where somebody said, oh yeah, she'll get it.
Sure.
But we don't know that.
And she'll get it till to the, to what we tell her.
Yeah. Summary. And that's not, we, we've all done a lot of work. Everyone is real impressed, put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into this. And, uh, I, I think now we're here in the eleventh hour, finally getting that face-to-face meeting where we can talk. We still don't know if all of our work has been vain and just kept from her. And that, I think, is the negative side of this. The positive is, we've got the meeting.
Yeah.
And now the question is, where do we proceed and how do we proceed? What do we want the format to be like tomorrow for that meeting? Who do we want in the room? Uh, it was kind of up in the air in some emails with you and me, Jane, as to who we all wanted to be there. Was it, was this just going to be you and me? Um, we didn't think that fair to the coalition. We didn't think it fair to the board of commissioners. Um, I, both of us really wanted the whole board of commissioners here. And at that point, it's a meeting. And we wondered if maybe the whole coalition shouldn't be present. Um, but then we, we have to decide who's going to speak. What questions are going to be asked? If there are any questions, um, or if it's just going to be, please, we've got thirty minutes. That's it.
And she'll take some of them.
Yes.
We have to let her talk to me.
She'll take six or seven at least.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we should count on her staffers sharing the information that we've sent. And so what I think we should do is.
We don't want her to have to stick up for her staffers either.
No.
So we should treat it like it's the first time she's here.
Yeah. And be an inform, information. Michael could provide all the school data, uh, how many jobs in the school district, how many kids are gonna be out of the school district. Um, give her that information that we've already given. But in a way, like Barry said, like it's the first time she's gonna hear. That way, we're covering our bases. We don't know if she gave it the information or not, but it is. And, you know, we don't have to bore with details, but on the other hand, I think we should hit the high spots of how this affects our community and make it clear, we, Plan B is a plan only because our first option is gone. And.
Yeah, and even if we, if we get the prison, to do something else with it, there's still gonna be the economic impact as if it were to close. Because there isn't any way that you can retool it for whatever the purpose, the re-purpose of it will be. So there'll still be some, yeah, I mean, it's.
We're definitely gonna have impact.
Yeah.
And.
Right.
So, but.
Could somebody ring her, maybe in a way saying, what would bring you up to speed?
Yeah, and go through, you know, some of the people that we think can do that. I, I think what Commissioner Albertson pointed, we should rely on her staff to be presenting some of the facts. What do you think, Michael?
I'm gonna throw out something here. It's completely a curveball, so bear with me.
Go for it.
The, the issue is that a lot of times when, when you work with the governor and her staff, the governor is only as good as the staff's information they give. And like you said, we don't want to throw her under the bus, but we also want to say, Governor, we know you've heard some of the information, but we want to hit the highlights that I think are important. I think that's the way you say it, because what's gonna happen now, let's say the governor does give us that Hail Mary pass. She lets us go ahead and go forward. What's gonna happen? Then she's gonna tell staffers to go get data. And if we got them ported off, the data they will give will not support us.
Is cute.
I'm, I'm just throwing this out to you. It's human nature works, so I'm just saying, the bottom line, Governor, we're not gonna insult you. We know you've got a lot of information. You may make informed decisions, but we need to really let you know, here are the five major things that's gonna hit our, our four, whatever it's gonna be. And these are the, and then at the very end, what I think you do at the very end is, you know, Governor, you always love, you always love, in your, in your, in your practice, you always love that second brief to, to the judge, the appeal. So we're gonna appeal to you with our second brief. Our second brief is, if we can't keep the prison open, then this is what we want to do, Senate Bill. Does that make sense?
Well, so like, they already support the Senate Bill, so I'm gonna know if we, because.
I don't want to bring it up, but that's the very last sentence, what I'm saying, but I don't ever want to give her now.
Right.
I mean, the issue is that the, the devastation here is catastrophic.
Right.
And I think you point out that catastrophically, COVID's really hit us harder than most because of our economy. You know, and that's it. And then we have a lot of federal money coming right now to the bigger schools, districts. It will not trickle down as much as we want it to here. And this is going to have a direct impact to employment. Then you're going to have people on the public vote. You're going to have people, you know, getting unemployment, getting all the stuff we have to pay. And the bottom line is, I think it's the gift that keeps giving. She loves stories. Tell her it's the gift that keeps giving. I've got eighty plus kids who are going to lose, here I'm going to lose sixteen employees. We're going to not be able to play buses. You know, we're going to actually have a problem here. We have sixty-two properties that people are going to sell, so all of our, all of our economic base now will be depleted. And we are right in the middle of a major industrial impact here that's in the premises of succeeding or not. And if we pull this out, they're not going to come invest. So Governor, this is going to be one of the major, one of the most difficult impacts in a rural situation. And quote, we know that your third priority, and we appreciate that as rule. And this right here will be, no matter how much support you give us, this catastrophic event will put us to a place, even the support will not get us back to normal.
Even, even getting the prison and trying to retool it is going to get us back.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Could be yours.
Yeah.
So sorry, I took the command, but I.
No, I think you're alerting, no.
I said that.
So going back to Constantine, Constantine from the governor's office testified in behalf of Senate Bill nineteen.
Yeah, I know that.
And so.
That's a cover your tail bill, but I didn't say that, did I?
It is, it is, yeah. And so we just have to be, you know, she wants to help rural communities. She's, wants to help the environment, it's a geothermal facility. What was the award they won? They, what's one of them?
Seed.
Which one?
What? Seed.
Seed.
S E E D.
Seed. Oh, the seed.
Say that again, Brenda, seed.
Seed. Seed award.
Oh.
Award.
Seed award.
It's where they have the platinum, gold, all that stuff.
Okay.
Because of that facility being green. You know, we need to remind her, hey, you won an award. The state won an award for this.
And they can get more awards, Jim.
I'm sorry, I didn't make enough copies. This is a facility plan for solar and wind and greenhouses that Steve Brown and staff did at the prison. And I believe Nick can be corrected if I want to say something wrong, because my memory's not always good. We have a graduate student give a show when Obsidian builds the three hundred megawatts at Christmas Valley to offset all our climate change. And none of the agencies, what I'm hearing, are meeting the goals that she set through executive order. We can bring her here to Lakeview with your guys' permission and give her all the credit for having the first prison in Oregon that is completely offset with geothermal, solar and wind and greenhouses producing all their food. Because economics, no matter what community you go, it's for the economic benefit.
This is huge. This shows.
This is, and this is a big thing. Give her the credit.
And how many other correctional facilities does she have that have this kind of record?
There's none in Oregon, I don't, according to Steve Brown. And I never, I, I don't know what across the nation. I wouldn't tell if this one would be one of the first in the nation.
But it'll be an net zero facility. Yeah. That's less than a megawatt to make the facility net zero, but it also offers the opportunity to train some of those prisoners and, sorry, inmates in the technical skills around building renewable energy projects. There's a lot of benefits from it. So I think it's positive to say like, you know, outline the need for a community and the negative impacts, but also highlight why it would be a positive move for her to keep the prison open. Really hit hard on that from a political standpoint. It just supports your efforts.
And it gives you an option to change your mind.
Right. Rehabilitation of inmates and.
She caught that, but exactly.
We don't know.
And that's, and then she got it in front of.
It's adults in custody, by the way.
AIC.
Sorry.
We're going to. Okay, you guys said that fast and you said it in a way I could understand it. Good.
You didn't expect that to happen, right?
I don't know.
And I'd like to say, we can put some political pressure on, because the film that was done about renewables, the funders of that, one of them's Tom Barham, owns Nike. And then I'm on the Southern Oregon Climate Change Political Actions Committee. And on there is Bill Bradbury, former Secretary of State. I could ask them to back us on this. I don't know if they will. I have no clue. I don't have, Tom and I have had some arguments about things, but we've never really met, you know, one on one on anything. But I can sure, I will do those asks if you want me to. Uh, you know, I won't do it without your permission, or LCRI will, but we will, more than willing to do that. Just to give another angle that she might buy into.
We'll know more tomorrow.
And I don't know if it'll work, but.
Brenda, did, um, did the union file the lawsuit?
Um, not that I'm aware of. I know that they, they are in the middle of talks of exactly how they're going to try to do a stay.
Okay. Do you feel like there's anything the union has, that, anything you could say on behalf of the union that would be helpful tomorrow? You or Melissa?
Yeah. I, I really am not sure about that. I know that, um, Asney's relationship with the governor has gone downhill very recently and because of the prison closures. So, um, yeah, I, I, um, we have talked until we're blue in the face and, and, I mean, I, I will say whatever you guys want me to say.
Maybe we might, if we have anything, maybe we, not that you shouldn't be on the call, maybe it would be better to have Melissa speak for local employees if we go down that road.
Okay.
I asked a question about the union. Has any of the other unions joined, sued as in solidarity, like OEA and OSEA and some of the bigger unions that have supported the governor, and forty percent of her campaign was from them?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can find out.
That would be huge. I mean, if you got OEA or OSEA, one of those two unions to go back that, I think that would be huge, or the police union, you know, the fire.
Okay, I, I will send an email.
This is sol, this is solidarity message. It's all you need.
And I want to say one more thing about the solar at the prison, one megawatt, developers will pay for that. And then the state, if they want to, if the state, depending on the contract with you negotiated, be a twenty to twenty-two year payback on the standard electrical prices. So it's not even that they have to put out a thing to put solar to make that carbon neutral.
Okay, so I'm coming up with an agenda. So, taking a half hour, I'm on, come in, we're going to have to introduce ourselves. And, and do that fast. She will, with her speech, I feel like about seven minutes. And then.
Are we allowed to send stuff before?
To send stuff to her?
To her?
Sure.
What I'm thinking out loud is you can send the committee members to her. Same time, but did you, okay.
I read that.
I would say, Governor, you have the list. It's already sent to you.
She has the list, but she'll leave names, names. So, um, I'm going to be pretty good at things. We need to say who we are.
Yeah, she knows, sure.
Just to say who we are. And so, yeah, we can say, you know, you know why we're here, but here's who we are. And then I'm assuming there'll be a couple staffers. I don't know if Annette will be on. She's, you know, started out with Regional Solutions. I'm assuming Constantine will be on, probably Chief of Staff. I don't know. So there's seven minutes. Somebody just, somebody do some math, because I'm doing this. So for us, um, how do we put it? Who's going to be the, and James, you're the chair, so we'll treat this like a commissioner.
Yep.
So.
It, it will be commissioner.
It will be. So we won't have to pretend, we can, we can treat it like a real commissioner.
Yeah, and I'm grateful for, you know, just the fact that we're doing it that way, so that the other board members can be there.
So, um, say, we know that you're aware, you know, and here's a little background. Just, just to bring everybody up to speed. So then you can do that.
And like, like Michael said, and we'd like to hit the highlights.
So you feel pretty confident, you got them all?
Um, you know, I mean.
Do you want to point people or do you want to say?
I think, I think it would be great if we had some other faces aside from my own.
Okay.
And kind of break it up a little bit, so you don't hear the same voice throughout the whole thing. I think, you know, obviously, I think you should speak a little bit, because a lot of this does come down to the fact that you have a relationship with her. You know her, um, and there's, there's good history there.
She's a relationship person.
Yes, very much so.
And I told you about the time when I met her, she asked how you were doing.
Horrible, prison closed.
Of course, I haven't seen you in a couple of years, so I don't know.
She's in prison now.
Close it, let her get out.
So, so a question to you two, since you guys were both commissioners at the time the prison opened, did, did the, did the state ever say or give you any kind of written thing saying, we're doing this to provide economic stimulus to Lake County?
That is exactly what President Constantine said to me.
So, do you have that document?
It was not a document.
So I think that needs to be said. That starts our history. That starts the beginning of the process. We were promised by Governor Kidsopper in nineteen, or two thousand fifteen or whatever it was, two thousand four. Did you like Governor Kidsopper?
I was a fan of him.
No, but did she?
Oh, sure.
I don't care what you think about Kidsopper. No, I'm sorry.
Um, you know, it, it was fine until he told her he was going to quit. And then she came back from the Secretary of State's convention and then, and then he didn't quit. They, they had a little following. I don't know who they are, but yeah, I mean, basically, the chief governor, because he quit. Um, Kit, do you want to talk to Mike?
Well, at the time, I think it was ninety-seven, our unemployment rate was between fifteen and sixteen percent. And I think it would probably go back to that, maybe even higher if this was closed. We have some skin in the game, because there was a donation of acreage for the places. I, I think a little background would be helpful to her, because she probably doesn't know very much about this program. They bought fifty additional acres. I don't know why. They fell on the ground to do the G O T, or some of them, I don't think they're tall, but I think they're in there.
We got to, got to mail though, you know, why she should keep it.
Why she should keep it, yeah.
And what's in it for her or what's in it for the state.
That's why I'm afraid of you.
So we got, you know, I'm not opposed to the background.
I'm not either, but I'm afraid of.
We've got to be quick.
It's got to be quick. I would not be able to give any more.
I, I just want to bring up the promise that was made.
There was no promise ever made.
The statement.
All I would say is that, when Governor Kidsopper, now I talked to Governor Kidsopper about it. What he said was, I can't bring the businesses to Lakeview. Very little I can do for the community, but I can put a prison in. That's the thing I can do for economic stability.
I think that is exactly what you said, right?
Because even if she gives us the building, we're back to that problem in two thousand four.
And so it's something that they identified back then, when, the reason you and I went up to Congress, you, you, like you said, you said, we're going to talk about fire and impacts of fire on Lake County. And you, you and I had a big long conversation about that, but you had the intent of hijacking the meeting, so to speak, and just saying, here's what's going to happen to us if you close our prison, so, and what's been done to us in terms of wildfire will pale in comparison. And, and it was an excellently well-made point, but to Commissioner Albertson's point, if we go back to stating that a previous governor did tell us that there was very little he could do for our community, except for put a prison here, but now we're going to lose it. But your whole goal and vision, going back to what Commissioner Shulenberger said, is to help this, these rural counties and these rural communities.
That's your goal, Chris?
I think it needs to be clear, though, when we talk about the potential, um, unemployment rate that's going to happen here, that that does not include prison employees, because we're going to leave the county.
Right.
We're not going to be amongst those. Many of the people that, um, are out there were either going to be retiring, they have some early retirements, and a few that are going to other jobs within the community or have already. But most of us are going to other counties, to other prisons.
That's true. They're going to sit and collect and clean the garbage.
Yes.
Well, I'm not arguing the other side of the law. The state, she looks at it from the state's perspective, that those people who go, you go transferring to someone at the prison, those people aren't.
They're bumped.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, that's actually not, probably not going to be an issue, um, with the number of vacancies that are at the facilities. And even if we do go bump, the DOC is intending on not filling positions, so not going to be hiring, um, for certain jobs to make room for us, but we're still leaving this community.
Well, the impact, the unemployment, there'll be some unemployment or some impact, but it's going to be actually more about the people not being here, spending their money, you know.
Well, it's going to be unemployment for us, because the school district will lose.
Yes.
Huge.
Yes. Well, and every, every business in town where we spend that money is going to lose business.
Exactly.
And the value of homes is going to go down.
I don't know if it fits in tomorrow, back to the renewable energy side. Uh, she's wanted to get support from Eastern Oregon for a long time, and that hasn't occurred. I said in our letter that I volunteer to go county to county if we could agree on a climate change plan. I've got a pretty well one that I'll lay out sometime if you want, in my head. And I will go, and I'll volunteer, well, I'm not a paid volunteer now, so I have to go to any county and talk about that. And I will do it for that purpose, you know, to get, help her get support. I'm waiting for it.
Well, I think there should be a renewable energy, uh, section of our presentation.
I think it should be at the end.
Towards the end.
Towards the end, yes.
I do think it should be significant, though. Yes.
And I, I think that, I would like to hand it over to either, either Jim or Nick. Which one of you guys want to take the floor and kind of talk about it, or, you know, but we just, we kind of have our designated, designated people for those subjects.
Okay, so if you want to say it's a repeat, then, or probably not for it.
Yeah, the highlights, I liked how Michael.
Okay, so, so give it to me. I'll say, when I was a commis, I was a commissioner when it came in. Kit and I were commissioners when it came in. We fought hard for it. We were delighted when it came in. This is what Governor Kidsopper said to me, it's worked great for our community ever since. That's why we're fighting so hard now to keep it. And then, you know, here's, here's some real life impact.
Yeah.
And then Ginger, are you going to be here or not?
Yeah, I will.
So, for, here's a hole that I don't know how to fill. The chamber director has not answered my emails, my phone calls. Somebody needs to do the economic part. You can do it. I can do that. You know the part.
Yeah, because I think Michael's, I, I think Michael could do the economic part, but I think Michael is a school guy.
And I'm also new. You've got to understand that. She knows I'm new here, so.
Gotcha. And so I really think at this point, Ginger, she's been making all the meetings, she's been here. I think, I think it really should be.
Well, I'll just reiterate the highlights of what Damon had. I'm not going to go into the whole thing, but just the, the thirteen million dollar was paying and that sort of thing. I won't get, I won't get long.
The sixty-two homes.
Yeah, yeah, all that. How about the bonds? Somebody's going to look up about the bonds.
I don't know how much there is, but they still owe.
They still owe. I clarified that.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And the state is responsible for this, the county.
They're responsible for that, and that's their.
I think that's being taken care of in Senate Bill nineteen, and we were. I think that's being taken care of in Senate Bill nineteen, and we were to take it, and so, and I think for us to bring that up, well, never mind, but.
We don't want to just go to Plan B.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna give a segue.
This, this was a Plan A.
Correct, correct.
She says no, then you can go to Plan B.
Yeah, so that's a good question, so I've got several what-ifs here on the pitch. What if she cuts us off, and she just basically says, you know, like halfway through, you know, we get in, we got thirty minutes. We get into this about fifteen, and it's like, guys, um, this is my decision, I've made the decision, let's move forward.
She, she won't do that. No, she won't do that, because she hasn't encountered thirty minutes, she has, she has, she'll, her staff will cut the meeting off at three o'clock if she's not happy. They have ways for her to let people know that it's time to end the meeting, she won't say that.
Does that make sense, everybody? I guess, I guess a better question you should ask those, what if she really would rather talk about Plan B?
That's, that's kind of where I'm.
Oh, there you go, I see that now, she goes there.
Can we just finish our agenda real quick?
Absolutely. Okay.
So after Ginger, then I would say, as, as we have thought through all this, there is an added incentive to keep it open, then to Ginger.
Jim, you've been here longer than I have, you've probably been here before with Governor Andrew, so if you wanna have that conversation.
Before, that'd be a strong word to use.
I think it's probably a better fit, we do that.
Okay, so.
And the rest of the group is?
We'd start off with introductions. I'll, I'll just do a quick opening, I'll hand it to you. And, um, then from you, we'll, uh, go to Michael, the schools, economic impacts, um, and then Jim on solar. Uh, I guess from there, I'd be curious, commissioners.
Yeah.
Well, I think, so you're gonna, you're gonna be the co-host on this one?
Well, she's just gonna kind of do a quick history on things, because she was here as a commissioner.
In what spot, at the beginning?
At the beginning, when I, after I do the quick introduction.
Then we're going to schools, then we're going to, uh, renovate.
Economic, and then renewables.
And then renewal.
Oh, economic, economic.
Economic development, or the economic impacts.
It's in that renewable deal, I think you need to bring up the, the award, and.
It's lead by the way, not seed.
And seed, she said seed.
It is seed.
It's L E E, the L E E.
It's seed.
Is it sure?
Yeah, I think they know.
That's what Plaque said.
Okay.
It's good to move it, okay. Lead, lead your field.
Please, okay.
We can settle this outside.
Anyways, no, kidding, and how do you wanna finish with the other commissioners? And where do you want us to go with that?
Yeah. You know, is it, I think Mark should maybe bring up Plan B, since he's kind of been working on it, just to close, but.
I, I don't know, I think this is a Plan A's, um, if Plan B comes up and she wants to talk about Plan B, I'll take the floor then. Because the, I'm the one that started it and got a hold.
In terms of you following.
But I don't wanna bring it up if she doesn't bring it, because this is, this meeting is to save it, this is our time of bath, and when we hit a whole lot and lot, we don't know. And so, I'll do the cleanup. And that definitely comes up to that, and so, because I know that bill inside and out, because I helped create it, so.
And does it mean the end, even if she says no, because we got till two thousand twenty-two to.
It really don't, because there has to be a bill written to say. We have, well, I mean, there can be a Christmas tree, there can be an ornament on the Christmas tree, that'll be ended. So we have to tell June thirtieth.
But even with a bill, she can take it away with executive order, right, because it doesn't. And.
If there's a bill, she will have signed it, she will have signed the Christmas tree bill. So she will.
But it's not in the Christmas tree.
There is no Christmas tree bill right now. But we'll, there obviously, it's a very vast legislative session.
So could someone discuss with her evaluating how things look with the AIC public, population with the other two prisons, because she might look at this and say, wow, I need Warner Creek still, so maybe, I don't know how that looks or what you would say, but maybe her agenda for prevention isn't going to be as effective as she initially thought, and she might not wanna put Warner Creek on the burner, maybe let's put them on the back burner, and then evaluate after we list, after she sees the impacts of.
The bad, the bad thing with that is you're getting her to question her own.
That's fine, yeah.
And we can't do that.
Okay.
I think all we want to do is get her to turn around after this and say to her people, I don't wanna put Warner Creek.
And gets back to goal number three, I wanna help rural Oregon, and.
Well, and the renewable energy piece, I think is really significant, because that gives her a chance to change her mind and save face.
Right, yes, definitely, with, with her to feel good about changing.
Am I the appropriate one to bring up the seed? I, all I know about it is what I just turned down.
It was state energy efficiency design, I just looked it up, I think it ties into it.
Oh, there is a webpage I can look at.
Yeah, it's state energy, it's not the certification.
So it was about the geothermal, and they, they got the one because of the geothermal, and so.
When, when did they get the award?
Two thousand eight, was it?
That's definitely right, that gives you a.
And so, that, that's an award the state got for the geothermal, and then you lead right in with the rest of your story. So we're over a third of the way there. I think Barry can talk about rural Oregon, he's the goal, and. If she doesn't come up with Plan B, I could tell her, I, you know, me working at the sawmills in nineteen eighty, in the eighties, spotted owl came, changed the whole outlook of Lake County, changed our school district, people lost them.
We have a mill site that can't sell. It's been for sale for a while.
And how many years? Thirty?
It is up for sale.
And so this prison was our primer hope to, to escape that, and.
I think it's important to state, you know, maybe you don't have to state this, but the fact is, is that the prison was never a big boom to Lake County. It was simply offsetting tremendous impact that we had from all the mills closing.
Yes, exactly, yeah. Yeah, it wasn't like, yay.
Like, yay, look at this huge economic boost to our community.
And that might be the summary that you give, thinking about it. I mean, the la-, the last punch is the most important one. Don't screw this up, Jim. I think, I think what you just said is a good punch.
Say it again, say it again.
Yeah, say it again, because I think that's a really good punch, it's just pointing out that it didn't make it whole, but it did provide the stability to the town.
Yeah, uh, it, it was, it was never an economic boom, a boom to the community, to Lake County. We lost eight hundred jobs here in Lakeview alone when the mills closed. Um, this, the prison was there to offset the impact that we had from all the, of the other economic turmoil that we were going through. And it was to replace some of those other jobs and bring some of that back, um, but I think. I was trying to leave it in. I, I really, I really do think that the governor cares, and I really, I really think that she wants to help our county. I think it's, it's a matter of perspective, of making sure that she understands what the impacts will actually be to our community.
And equitable impacts of a rural community compared with closing of different, or different prisons in a more.
Very well, you want my job? No, I'm just kidding. Just a suggestion, no, that's very good, that's very good.
Five thousand one?
Yeah.
Job loss.
Was, is that what it actually is? Actually, yes, I don't, no, Ginger, you would have that, um, what is the job loss comparison?
Five hundred and fifty metro jobs to one job in one county.
Yeah, yeah, it's five hundred, I didn't think it was a thousand. What it was. Yeah, no, it's okay.
I got that. When we did, when we did the little, um, gig with, um, what was this, I'm sorry, uh, Constantine, I did a little thing and that's in there too, so, I may just use the same thing, it's pretty short.
Hope you added timelines here, as you're talking about, yeah, it's, yeah, I'm, I'll be two and a half, three minutes, you can only get about three, otherwise you're gonna be.
Yeah, mine, probably be shorter, I'll pay two and a half if I'm not.
Yeah, and then, uh, so you got you and you both speaking, and I got you speaking five, that gets you twenty-two minutes, so.
Okay, and we're, we're gonna be a timekeeper to go, so you know you got five seconds to close in case you run over.
Melanie does that with us, hold, she makes it. She keeps us on track.
Wouldn't be the first time with this.
Should we go on it? Yeah. And then we need some Q and A, right?
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say that I really would like to make sure that the governor kind of has some ample time to respond. I don't wanna make her or force her to respond, I just wanna make sure that she's.
Governor, we wanted to end early, so you can make sure you have time to ask us any questions or concerns you may have.
And tell us about that bill, remember, you're, you're going to write.
Turn time, she'll take whatever.
Absolutely, yeah, if, if she, let her go over the time.
Sure.
And.
We wanna respect your time, Governor, we wanted to cut it, cut it now to give you time, ample time to ask those questions or any concerns you may have, and she'll take whatever she wants. And that would be a big telephone right there, if she starts asking questions, that'd be huge.
I do think we need to be prepared, that what she's probably going to say is, boy, I really, I really, really, really feel for you. I'm really, really prepared to think out of the box for ways to help you. I don't think we should get into, um, spitballing ideas tomorrow, you know, if, you know, if she just, you know, decision made, can't do it, can't do it, can't do it. Any, any ideas for?
She's not prepared to talk on it.
Yeah, we're just not prepared to, don't waste our time tomorrow saying, oh, we could do this, we could do that, maybe we can do this. I don't think tomorrow's a game to do that, like you say, so, plan A discussion tomorrow, in our.
Yeah, I don't think we should talk about Plan B at all, unless she brings it.
She brings it up, and then I think it's.
And she might, A might bring it to her and say this, and so we're, we're making assistance here, it's, and that's for, you know, good.
So what do we talk about at that point?
Well, do we dare bring up, we've got the facility, if you continue to keep the prison, keep the facility, why can't we turn this into a regional treatment, so the major one?
Well.
I guess I don't wanna go there, man. What, what you could ask for, I'm just throwing it out to you, say, Governor, that's great, thank you very much for that opportunity, can you give us a week? And we'll, we have four or five things we'd like to get back with our committee and get back to make sure it's articulated properly, so we don't waste your time.
Yeah.
And it won't be through the.
I know that, I know that too. But I, but I've already set up another committee, um, with Annette Leba, um, John Jennings from planning, state planning, and that's Larry Holmes' gang, um, Greg Sevlin from DQ, um. And so I, I've got the state players already involved.
So that's what we say.
Yeah.
And the planning for the facility?
Planning for the facility plus another project we're working on, and so, um, and a cow by the name of Jill Miles, who's the business recruiter for, um, Oregon, and so, that's our committee.
Yeah, this is the group to do that.
And so, I'm already working on that, so we, and she's gotta know about that group already, I'm sure, and so, you know, they're her employees, so. All of them are her employees except for.
Which one of you guys wanna go first, as far as, Barry, you, Mark, which one of you guys wanna go after solar?
You guys said, have me talk about rural Oregon, what'd you want me to say about rural Oregon?
That we understand, we understand, Governor, that, you know, your third goal, we really appreciate that.
One of your priorities.
Priority, priority was identified, third goal, we can't thank you enough for that. Also, might be very important to say that, thank you very much for as a board chair, thank you for providing the support in schools. You know, we've been open all year, she knows that, but you know what I'm saying, it's one more thing to show that connects to it, and then on the part there about how this is important. Well, like, Lake County, since COVID, we're ranked number one on unemployment right now in the state. We work, we have law, we have the lowest unemployment in the state.
We're the lowest.
Oh, okay.
And we're the worst, Clamath County is number two. And you pull that prison slogan on us, and we're going to go back to, what, what you said? Unemployment, and then child abuse, battery, all of the person-to-person crimes are gonna go up. Um, alcoholism, drug abuse.
She knows about Red Rock.
I was trying to figure out how this, something other things that we're doing. You know, I mean, some of that might be mostly some of the renewable energy, it's not renewable energy, but, you know, it, it, it is related to cleaning up our woods, it's related to fuel reduction.
Part of the climate change analysis.
Right, absolutely.
We don't know what it'll make, but, you know, student study.
It's not, it's not going to be, uh, Red Rock isn't gonna have their D E Q emissions data out in time to conclude it.
I'd just say, we're trying to get, trying really hard to get Red Rock up and going, you know, so we're trying to add to our economy, but, but they're having, uh, stumbling blocks as well.
It's hard to get investors to commit to that big commitment, if we're seeing that the prison continues its closure then. Let's tie it in there, bottom line is, why would I put three hundred million dollars in here if I see the prison closed?
Yeah.
It's hard enough to recruit.
Is it worth trying to figure out what would make her want to keep the prison open, and try and bring that up in a sneaky kind of way?
Well, I think the makeup thing, like the environment piece too, I think, she, I mean, it resonates with her, equity and environment, I call it the three E's, you know? Equity, environment, education.
I think California and Washington are kind of on the same treadmill here about the prison closure thing, and it's a West Coast, you know, I don't, I, I mean, I'm just sort of off the top of my head, but I don't think she wants to go outside sort of this coalition of those three states about it, I think there's part of that. I mean, I've been reading some things that are going on in California in regard to it, and that's gonna get spooky. That is gonna get really spooky when they start closing, and, you know, and Washington's not gonna be good, but California's spookier than any, and they've already been down that road, I mean, we've been down that, this road with closure and reducing prison populations in the eighties, and I was working in juvenile services at the time, and I'm here to tell you it didn't work, and I mean, and it was an adult population, but it, it bled down into juvenile, that was when they closed McLaren and Rosemont and all of the. Yeah, they had, well, what they did, what they did is that they, they built the Youth Authority Prison basically in Grants Pass. I mean, that was one of the facilities, they built some others, because it didn't work, it got worse.
Do I conclude by saying, we got ahold of Wyden and Merkley about the film, and say that this fits under the president's requirement for infrastructure? You know, that we've talked about, and that's what we told, when we said, watch the film.
That's a very interesting question.
You could be a model for the president.
Well, with our invitation to sneak around the country, we could say we can use a net zero prison, prison in Lake County to advertise across the entire country.
Yes.
That's, and it might, it might allow Oregon to access additional federal funding.
Yes.
All right, okay.
Are you giving him five minutes, so he's gonna use, I guess. Which is kinda what you guys have a lesson, so you get that in a five minutes.
Yeah.
But yeah, all, because you guys do have a number of things to hit on, the net zero prison, net zero county, and the first to do it in the country. As an O C, I'm a Republican, can't ignore.
Nick, you thought she got the letter, right?
I sent it to Annette and I sent it to the other regional solution staff members, and they said they got it to her personally. Personally, they use the word personally, so.
And they wouldn't use it.
That's a pretty neat circle, letters, that.
What would you, what, what is your presentation on?
Net zero.
What, what, would you like your presentation to be sent to your girl? You sure you want her to spot it out?
Say, give a little history of what, what's happened here.
Oh, absolutely. And I, and I think, you know, Nick seems, you know, eight hundred jobs and things like that, you wanna talk a little bit about that because you worked, you know, for a lot of years. And it was pretty impactful for you.
I have a different job.
I mean, it's whatever you wanna, what you want to present, Commissioner, I, I, I'm, I'm kinda jotting down some of the subject matter that's going to be covered by each person. And so I kinda know.
She, she really does love story, you're not about your personal story, that's, that's it, no, you're invested, you're, I mean, story is the biggest thing I've seen of that year, and some of the decisions she's changed from.
Yeah, storytelling.
Pardon?
Tell her about Kit and I going through a recall.
There you go.
Well, I tell her that I had Andy Kerr, my house for dinner, and that's how we got the cloud, we put landscape porch restoration act indoors playing.
She's not, she's not.
That was hard.
Andy for me. Conversation. That might be a bad move.
It was a hard move to make.
I think the passion's gonna flow naturally, I really do. I think the personal story's gonna be it, and I think it's a good shot.
Uh, some of them will be kinda answered by the direction, I'm kinda feeling the coalition this group is really wanting to build. You know, I, I had, I had a couple what ifs, so what if she really turns the table over to us right off the bat? And she doesn't take that seven minutes right away, what do we do, would the appropriate thing, maybe this is a question for you, and you, Michael, and Jane. Would the appropriate thing to do be, at, at that point be, say, well, you know, Governor, we'd be kinda curious to hear, you know, what your thoughts are, you know.
Do you think we'd present it, what do you think? Ask the governor, what do you think, was it just presented?
Yeah, what, w- w- well, well, I mean, we're talking right at the very beginning.
If she just turns it to us?
If she just turns it to us, do we take that and be like, well, you know, it is our meeting, and we do only have thirty minutes with the governor, if she presents that to us. Should we take that as an opportunity and like, yes, absolutely, we'll use our twenty-two minutes immediately?
Take right there, no, no, I think it's a right there.
They just take it right.
Okay.
You go right there, because that, that means she's, she's listening.
Yeah, she, if she starts it out, she's willing to listen right off the bat, then I'm gonna go straight into the intro then.
Go right in there. But she might, she might come back and say, you know, I made a decision, it was a difficult decision, you know, she's gonna point out that, you know, I, I know. I believe that if this money is put into education or early childhood, you know, then, then this money in the future will pay off in the long run. You know, and she'll say something like that, and that's what I've heard her say multiple times about this.
Okay, that, that leads.
And she's also philosophically, she's against prisons. Philosophically, mine, so punitive, she wants a more real rehab type, um, prison system, and I'm not gonna debate that.
So. Yeah, so we can't, what I hear you saying is she wants more minimums? No, because they're, they're more of a rehab type setting than medium facility.
No. No, she, she. When I have heard the speaker, is the prison is not part of it, that's the last resort.
Um.
Yeah, I'm just saying that she loves that.
Start out with preschool.
Her, her money, her idea is, if I save this money, I will be able to put this in preschool. If people sustain it.
I still think that even if she's, we're hearing that, we need to present everything, and even if she says, no, go, it doesn't, she's not gonna think about it.
I still think you present it.
Yeah.
I think, I think this is a whole different case, it's a very important case, and I think it's very pertinent, I also think it's, 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 and I'll be very honest with you, it's, it's tough. Coming from that side, it's very difficult to understand this side. I've only been here a few months, and I'm just now starting to look through the window. I'm not in the room yet, this meeting will help get her in the room. That make sense? And I've been here, living here, and I, I call it my home, my, my problem is, even though I saw all those bills, okay, what are we trading for this? It was, it was almost like a card game, I hate to say that.
That's how it is.
That's how it is, and I think this has given her some cards, a nice way out, it also fits her agenda of what she'd like to do, and I think it's just the one way. We're giving her options to, to graciously change her mind.
Yeah, she's, she's full close, she, she, she's not necessarily for keeping prisons open, she's, she's for potentially closing these prisons and putting that money back in the schools. But she's also for rural communities, according to her, so we have to, we have to play that.
Right.
The, the que, the question that I have on another what if, if she decides that, and she just basically tells us, this is what's gonna happen. I've made my decision, it was a tough decision, but here's where we are. Um, everyone in the room, our hearts are gonna sink. Because this is a very definitive meeting, and there's going to be that moment for all of us. Where do we go at that point? And, and how, how do we end this meeting, and are there questions that we would like to have answered? I, I think, you know, quite honestly, we've, we've seen some reports that, um, through some footprint studies, that the prison has six point three million dollars worth of repair. That needs to take place with, by two thousand one three. If that's true, the county, we're kind of concerned about taking it off. Now, that number isn't entirely accurate. And, but it would be used as a reason for closing the prison. What, how do we present a question along those lines, or do we even go there?
How would you?
You don't wanna go there.
Not listening.
No, I'm talking like after it's done. I'm talking like after our hearts are, are ripped out, and we're just like, there's nowhere else for us to go. Do we wanna get it on the record that it wasn't for economic reasons, why she's closing it, or for fiscal reasons or anything else, but that it's just her decision?
I could work on that on Plan B.
So, didn't a lot of your guys' inmates write letters to the governor's state?
Some of them, but they don't want us to close this facility. Um, we actually had one inmate, his family out of California, um, wrote emails and made phone calls to the governor. Um, there seems to be a perception that everybody lives up in the valley. You know, that there's actually nobody down here, um.
It's like Siberia.
Yeah, but there's, we are closer than any other facility for a lot of the inmates that we have. And that was one of the things that came out in the paper, is bringing the inmates closer so they can get more visits. It's not accurate. Um, we are closer for a lot of the families.
We have a lot of California adults in custody.
We have some, we have a lot from Clamath Falls, a lot from Medford.
I think that custody stuff, because then you're tugging at our hard strains of the national inmate, our adult in custody.
And their families.
And their families stating, please, don't take this away, we don't want to have to drive for eight hours to visit our home. And I think that needs to be said.
Where would they go?
Um. They're gonna, there's, there's not room for all of the inmates from all three facilities at Deer Ridge. There's, Deer Ridge would take some because of, uh.
Where's that located?
Madras.
Oh, okay.
It, it is a minimum facility, um, but realistically, some of these minimum custody inmates are gonna have to be housed at medium custody facilities, which.
Costs more, cost, it's not right with them.
It, it costs more and there, it's different politics, inmate politics there, it's not as safe as a minimum facility. So actually, it doesn't support her agenda, you know, her reform agenda.
Would there be some value in listening about the inmates' families and about the condition of the facility? Because we've, we ran up against that before.
Well, that was kind of my point, you know, in talking about the condition of the facility, once, I, I'm, I'm not talking about bringing this up on, on presentation.
Right.
I'm talking about, once we hit on all of our high points, the governor's had time to respond, and she, and what if she just says it's done? I'm talking, at that point, Plan A is dead.
Right, but I'm talking that in our present day.
So, so you wanna talk about the conditions of the facility in the presentation?
Well, no, well, what I'm saying is, there.
We got a sixteen-year-old facility.
Why?
Second oldest in the state?
Second oldest. Second, second, he was the same.
Newest.
Second oldest, sorry, second, yeah, excuse me.
Second, and. Madras is new.
So the others should have more repairs to do in the U S R.
And.
Absolutely. Madras got a whole wing that needs fixing.
So there, there's several issues or several things that affected that cost, um. One of the things is the wrong siding was used when they built the facility, you know, on us.
Yeah, but that was taken care of.
That was taken care of, but that's still in the numbers that she's seeing, they're using a two thousand, I think it's two thousand fifteen, um, audit.
That was the thing. And they also used the toning, the geothermal from the, the street to the facility, they use that number two, and that's been completed.
That's been completed, the, um, water filtration system was a huge cost that in that audit said that it would have to be replaced, you know, by two thousand twenty-five, I think. Um, that's already been replaced, so, and then the air handlers at thirty thousand dollars apiece, according to our physical plant staff. Um, the person that does the work on them, it's like, they don't need to be replaced, not at thirty thousand dollars apiece. The windows, whatever that is, or something like that, there's something that needs to be replaced, but not the entire units. So, the information that was used to get, the maintenance cost is not accurate.
Yeah, but that's come out, that information came out and that number came out on an assessment dated from February this year.
They didn't do a, the audit.
I know.
In February.
That was the fake one, good audit, audit, but there was an assessment that was done in February this year. Signed by the, um, by, uh, Collette Peters.
My.
I, I have the.
I'm just saying, if they're using those numbers from two thousand fifteen.
That's what I'm hearing from the physical plant staff, is.
Right, and that's very possible that, and I don't doubt that the, that's, that's accurate, I'm just saying that they're still using faulty information from many years ago. To support an assessment that was dated February this year.
Right, I brought that up to you, um, Assistant Director this morning. The information that they're giving the governor was inaccurate.
By the way, Jane, Darrell Anderson is offered to be here if something were to be asked about. Oh, the town side of the. But I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know where the town side of.
What? Geothermal.
Oh, the town side.
You know, the.
Did you say town or down?
Town.
Town?
You know, the towns.
So they'll lose a little over two hundred thousand a year on geothermal, um.
And just the infrastructure, that's what Darrell was, you know, he, he knows all the history there. He was offering to be available if needed.
Might be good that there's just a question coming from the governor on infrastructure, somebody deserves to answer.
There won't be a question he has to ask.
That's true.
Yeah. It doesn't mean he'd have to answer, but he certainly knows the history, and he was offering services.
So I'm just throwing out, I'm the one with James, it's one more thought, I was trying to figure it out, if I'm in that meeting and she does close it down, and says, I've made my decision, I'm done.
Right.
That might be the time to ask a couple rhetorical questions back to her.
Yeah.
Governor, we sure appreciate you, at least if you have this meeting, letting us talk to you about it. That being said, what plans do you have to help us to restore the economic impact to our, to rural Oregon?
If you're like.
That might be, that might, well, what, you know, that might stimulate a conversation, I'm just throwing it out to you, you're right, she might just close it down. I mean, she did that up in, in the, the police reform thing here a couple months ago, she did that, she closed it down. I was thinking about press, press, you know.
Close down the conversation?
Yeah, she closed it down. And said, I'll have my staff, you know, look into options, and we'll get back to you, you know, I'm just throwing it out to you, if she does close it down, that might, might wanna ask you what.
I remember that, I remember that.
I know what she's going to say.
Obviously, that's what I was thinking about.
She is going to throw back to us, she's going to say, what do you want?
Yeah. Yeah.
I will be glad to work.
And that's when we, maybe when we do hit the, hit Plan B.
Because at that point, I'm, that's, that's kinda where I'm coming from, is that.
Yeah, I just thought about that, we gotta have that.
Why?
We need more time to develop Plan B.
Well, that's what we asked in the meeting, though, we, we, Governor, could we schedule a meeting in two weeks so we can bring back to you and articulate our, you know, very detailed plan, we do have a senate bill in, up there, but we also have some more.
We can. Yeah.
But we'll never talk to her again, you know.
Definitely.
We won't, but at least we, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because she's gonna, if, if she does say no, she's not gonna suggest anything then.
No, she's not gonna suggest anything, she's going to ask us to come up with something, and then, we've got time. We've got plenty of time, because prison's not gonna close tomorrow.
I, I think what we would do, I mean, I'm just throwing it out to you, I mean, I'm just one person, I'm the newest person here, so I, I acknowledge that. I think that's when you point out that, Governor, what we will need to do then is to, um, have complete control of our, of our, um, of that facility, so we do need to stake to make sure that that becomes.
If we want it. I mean, it just needs six point five million dollars of workers.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, with the maintenance, just the operating costs, the power, um.
Yeah, James, we would more than quadruple all of our county assets overnight, I mean, we're aware that, and, and that's why our, our main focus as commissioners is Plan A.
So money.
Uh, we, we, we do know that that facility would be. Yeah.
Like when I was talking to Senator Finley, I asked Senator, Senator Finley, I said, what are our options? He goes, well, you can either.
Yeah.
Get the facility, or you can look at an abandoned state facility for the next fifty years.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So we're, we're getting a, we're getting a fifty thou, uh, fifty million dollar facility. And we have to do something, and, or we let it sit there, it would be foolish.
Or.
Even if we scrapped it, it would be more than what we get.
Or the operating costs a year. Yeah, or we can play chicken with the state. Let them close it down in two years, they may be ready, right back, open it up.
Because that's exactly what happened when Collette Peters was in her former position over in Hard County.
Yeah.
Or. Or. Take possession of it and then rent it back to the state.
Don't count on that. Don't, don't build another facility.
Oh, this building.
That's what, that's what happened, the only thing in Portland is to get it turned into the homeless shelter. Set there for eight years, the brand is nicest prison in Portland, that's all, a homeless shelter. The jail.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna make the mistake of applying too much of the logic. To, uh, what, what the potential future could be.
But I do think you're right, though, the plan case, it does get, I don't know.
I don't know, um, I, I. I think what I'd probably do is I'll close up with maybe, uh, and I've gotta work on some language tonight on, uh, around equity for rural Oregon.
Um.
And for our community and for Lake County. Um, I'll, I'll figure out a way to kind of throw in some of the, the keywords and things that are.
She loves being called the champion of equity, it's been one of her mondes, we know you're a champion of equity, we appreciate that, we just hope you make sure you include that in all part, in all, all aspect of the state.
Right, and I'm not trying to, you know, blow the negative first on skirt, trying to be, you know, um, you know. I, I just, I, I wanna be respectful, obviously, but at the same time, you know, I, I think it's important to have a punchline.
Me too.
But it may be possible to move the truth through and go through when everybody's kind of hears it?
I think we are indeed.
I think that's what we're doing, huh?
Yeah, we're doing that now, but, and for that very intense time to just.
And who do we now, who do we want in the actual room? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Who do we want in the actual room?
Um. Personally, I mean, I think a larger crowd with more concern, even people that aren't speaking, I think it's important.
Do with that.
Sorry, I'm.
No, I, I.
I think I think the key is that we just don't have somebody go off.
Yes.
You know, lose their temper and.
Stomp out the room.
You can just keep going, you know, just.
Tell her how you really feel. We don't want that.
Come on, Barry.
Yeah, Michael, Michael's in the back, so I said, two minutes.
Whatever.
That's it, we're going to Idaho, we're leaving.
Oh, man, Gina Keed, that that's on camera right there.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We're moving the order.
We got Gina Keed on camera, we're going to Idaho, alright.
I think, is it still open?
Probably.
My sister works in Boise at a, one of the major fitness centers there, she's one of the bosses, anyway, she cannot keep an employee for nothing, because they hire them all at seven and a quarter in Idaho.
Yeah.
For minimum wage. And all they can get is the college kids, and then when the college kids have enough money, they don't bother coming back. And it is, it is brutal trying to employ people for seven twenty-five. You just have teacher salaries to forty thousand, state one, starting salary. Which is below working. No, it's not, not starting, no. Are starting, uh, starting for us, like thirty-seven, thirty-eight. And we're higher than most, but there's a lot of stuff, so. Uh, it's bad.
Yeah.
Trust me, we we use our.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me be part of this, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all so very much, appreciate you guys coming and assisting with us today, and so, you know, this is a pretty significant meeting, possibly one of the biggest. And uh, there there's a lot hanging in the balance on tomorrow. I still want everyone to be able to get a good night's sleep. Thanks, so. No pressure, yeah, right? Um, real, real quick, though, um, Michael, you were putting down time, what did you have down for time on presentation and and everyone's uh, stuff? I know you said you had five minutes down for the renewable energy.
Right, that just takes us to twenty-two, that's if the governor goes in eight minutes.
Okay, and who else did you have down for, uh, you had Jane down for two?
Two, I had, she said two and a half, she had three, I had two and a half, he had five, I had four, four, you know.
Okay.
And then that gives you four at the end.
So Jane, you are two.
Thirty-one minutes.
Yeah.
I think tomorrow is gonna be a spending tonight, I gotta pick up on five minutes.
Well, you don't have to use the five minutes.
Oh, good.
That's okay.
I really don't think I'll be two.
Yeah, but you'd be surprised, though, surprised, and also the governor might ask questions.
I'm gonna stream one line.
You know, just a final thought here, though, but uh, we kinda got the meeting because of your connection. Um, is there, do we need to have you follow up at the end? Or or be the one to help you have any questions for, so that she feels like she's answering you.
That's what I mean, you, I mean, finally wanna turn it over.
I mean, I'm just trying to take a little.
No, I think you're right, it's all PR, all for all relationships.
Because this is back to her comfort zone.
Yeah.
It's not me, it's not Mark, it's not.
That's your comfort zone.
No.
I I I don't know what my.
I think you thank her, I think you need to do that.
Yeah.
Thank her and ask her if she has any questions for us.
So, you know, we appreciate all your work, I know you had a difficult task, you know how that goes, that's that personal touch.
Yeah. And I don't really pay it back anymore.
I think bringing back the personal is always important.
How are you gonna set up the room, like, we're gonna have the speakers come here?
Well, I was thinking, kind of have the speakers positioned up here and maybe up there.
Should we get a smaller table or right here?
Well, I think you guys should be distanced as much as possible, but still visible, and then have your masks on.
Absolutely.
I was gonna ask about that, I was gonna ask, man, I was gonna ask about that, we're gonna have now.
Yeah.
And then remove them when you're speaking, but then.
This is the longest I've ever worn on this.
So are we gonna each go to the microphone then?
The microphone's right here for Zoom.
Oh, oh, okay, so we don't have.
Okay, so there is no microphone here, so it's not on this.
No. No, but we can, you know, strategically layer people, you know, how it's been viewed right now, we can.
Do we want to have?
Brenda, can you hear us pretty well?
She's got it on from you, Brenda, can you hear us?
Yes, I I can hear, I can hear you guys perfect.
Okay.
Perfect, good.
Okay, so we don't need to move around too too big.
No, okay.
What do you think about a round table?
We need her to be able to see us.
She doesn't have to see everyone all at the same time. So.
No, it'd be nice for her to see the speakers.
So I think, maybe, Bridget, is you're right, we can move this table up slightly, and we can, as our terms come up, we step up and sit down and you take the seat.
We can sit down too.
And that way we're, yeah, we can zoom out, that's true.
Do it like that, if if we have a round table, Barry, I think we would be too close together, and then it would look like we're defining her orders, so.
But will you, will you be free to move it back then? So that clears.
Do we, do we all sit up there?
I think so, because she respects elected officials, you're elected official, you're you're the one that represents people. And that's what, you're our choice, so.
That gives more space.
Gives more space.
We will have the mayor here tomorrow, I think, I thought we had.
But that gives, that also is a problem, because it's a problem meeting.
Mm-hmm, right. Do we sit, but we still want our speakers to come up and address them with commissioners to the back, so, well.
I don't wanna lose time in the shuffle, like, moving around, and I don't wanna distract her from you guys speaking.
No, but I think we can.
You know, people kind of sit, like, get a U shape right here.
You got three, you got seven people meeting.
Yeah, all the speakers could be right here, and we could just move.
I put the speakers right here, that's five, six, seven, eight, and put the other ones right in the corner, that's it.
And then just move the microphone.
Well, we wanna leave the microphone because it's just beyond that.
Oh, copy, 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 thank you. We probably need to put something on the door about, so people will come in during the meetings.
So anyone not speaking, basically, we can position towards the back of the wall, but we're still in the room, or we can, they they, but because we're limited on on frame space, it's great to have a large group of people. But it, but we can't fit them all in the, in the.
Is that as far as you can sit down?
Well, it will be a public meeting.
Yep.
I mean, if public shows up.
I mean, we could limit the public. I mean, just because we can't get everyone in the room.
Fifty percent, we imagine a low.
Yep.
I know that. Theoretically, three other people, four other people were invited that did not come today. Um, town manager, the mayor, um, the chamber director, and Charlie, but I I don't know, so we do, I don't know, and Charlie told me to be here, um.
Yeah.
So we'll see, but but they're not speaking, because we've got this as a finally coming machine now.
Yeah, you're not, you're not at the pre-meeting, you're not in the meeting, but we'll volunteer you for something later.
Yeah.
They have to write Plan B.
That's a red name.
So what do you think, when the commissioners with that view right there, when one of the commissioners is speaking, or?
So we can zoom in.
Zoom there.
We can change it, it zooms in a little bit. It's slow, though, so I hate to zoom in too much, because, you know, like.
Yeah, maybe just leave it in the line, maybe.
It's a six-stage interview.
Three, I think, three or something.
That's what I understand, but it could change tomorrow, or.
That was the C.
Most of.
It changes tomorrow, I know, I said it could change tomorrow.
Uh, the the three-foot spacing, social distancing is three-foot spacing now.
James got way too close to me.
Right, we're Lake County folk, we're we're the definition of social distancing.
We already have a twelve-foot distance.
We would be much happier with the one square mile per person that we got here in this county, so.
That's, that's our social.
Okay, so you can start out with it like this, and then.
Alright. And then sit down, but.
And zoom out.
Yeah, and we could pop up a little bit more, so we're not just on people's feet.
Right, well, it's, come on.
But it still would be nice to have people kind of move up.